And we are live, ladies and gentlemen. Let me try to get the best view of things. Hey, how's it going? Hopefully everyone can see me okay. Today, we are working on the car float. First, let me check my stream just to make sure my sound is coming through. Okay. It's been a little while since I've done one of these live workshops. I'm trying to get back into it. And all that. Hey, I sound good. Okay, cool. What was I saying? Yes. Car float. I need to finish up my track work. I've gotten all the track work leading to the yard. All that's good to go. All that's left for me right now is just the car float itself. Getting the track to the car float. And on the car float. Car float is about ready to finish the model off, get it put together. What I want to do first, though, is secure the car float's position on the bench work. Drinking Logan's tonight, sorry. So what I want to do is actually, I want to create kind of a key to sort of key in the car float so that I can lift the car float up, work on the scenery on the lake, on the river. And then be able to put the car float back in the exact same spot every single time. So the tracks line up perfectly. And it holds together well. It doesn't shift around when I do things like move the the bench work around the room, slide it in and out of the layout. That kind of thing. I also want to be able to remove as many modeled objects off of the layout itself whenever I'm traveling with this, so that I can kind of wrap them and store them in a more protective box in my car. And not just keep it kind of locked in as part of the layout as I'm traveling with the layout itself. So I want to create kind of a key system where I can just be able to place my barge back in the same spot every single time and have it line up exactly. I've already created the temporary car float bridge that'll be a stand-in until I get my final car float modeled and in place. So I know I've got sort of the angle that everything comes across the water at, correct? I've got the length of it all correct. So now I just have to lock in the car float. So what I'm gonna do, first of all, let me take a look at my reference materials. I want to determine if there's any visible separation between the float bridge and the car float itself, or if they kind of just butt directly up to each other. Luckily, there are some pretty good pictures of the float bridge. I don't see a separation. It's a little hard to tell from that angle. I am going to take a look at some other modelers and see what they did. See how they've handled the situation. Okay, I think I got it lined up pretty good then. Hey, Humanity Junction, how's it going? Oh, you're dropping some truth, some knowledge on me here tonight. Transfer origin is a float and the float is locked slash tied to the transfer bridge. There should not be a gap. This is not the final transfer bridge. This is only temporary. I've got, I purchased the laser cut bridge. Let me pull it out. I purchased Tim Morris's laser cut Bronx Terminal Bridge Kit. It is a very similar, well, it's the same, it's the same style bridge as what's on 26th Street Station. So, you know. It's cool like that. It's too long for the space I have available on this layout, so I'm going to have to cut it down. But until I get that bridge put together, this one's just a stand-in. Just so that I can get tracks laid and I can get cars moving and operations going and stuff. So that is going to be the permanent bridge. And I plan to detail that up all cool-like. That is a little ways down the line. Okay. So first thing I'm gonna do is just make sure I'm lined up nicely. I'm just gonna use these blocks as sort of a guide for myself. Just so I can make sure I'm lined up okay. Hey. Big Bill is here. How's it going, Big Bill? Long time no see. Okay, so to create this key for my barge, I'm gonna actually drill through the bottom plates of the barge. I'm gonna have to widen the hole and I've got dowel. I'm gonna cut and glue in there. So it's gonna be a little dowel that sticks up out of the surface of this. That'll just, the barge will just set into. That's the plan anyway. And I should have said, set aside everything before I start these live streams, so I'm not like constantly going off camera. But it is what it is. So I tell you what, starting a new layout has been a huge kind of boost of energy for me. I don't think I've done this much model railroading in a long time. Just everything feels exciting and fresh, you know? It's been a lot of fun that way. Got some New York people in the room tonight. I have been, since I started this project, I've been annoying the hell out of my wife. I've been watching like just YouTube videos of like New York 1950s. Just so I can get an idea of like the composition of like cars. It's been, it's been fun. My wife has probably not enjoyed me just sitting there watching just old film footage of people walking around New York City with cameras. Filming people walking down the sidewalk. But yeah, it's been, it's been, I've been working on this layout or a version of this layout for 15 years maybe. I mean, my first version was a small shelf switcher, but it was this theme. And I've been working on this theme layout, ignore this steam locomotive, but I've been working on this themed layout for 15 years. So to like completely switch it up like this has been just real, just a real shot in the arm. Okay, so I'm gonna I'm gonna dremel through the bottom of the barge hole and into the wood, so I got my mark. Just like that. So if I did it right, I've got let's see, what do I want to do? Don't want to lift it just yet? No, let's keep drilling. Humanity Junction, I love your live stream setup, by the way. I am extremely jealous. You've got like the El Gato thing going or whatever it's called, so you can flip between cameras, which is cool. Did you have sound effects? I heard sound effects, right? You had some sound effects queued up or something? Or no, maybe you had like graphics queued up. I've only visited the one stream. My apologies. I should be watching more for sure because it was really good. Just extremely professionally done. I was very impressed. I want your setup for sure. You have it down really good. Okay, so what I'm gonna do? We drill a pilot hole. Here, let's use this for the pilot hole. And I don't know how far down I want to go, but probably not all the way through the wood. If you want to change up your stream more and happy to help. Yeah, I want to my goal for streaming on this channel is I want to like really show the whole process of building a layout as much as possible through streams as well as like just the regular, you know, edited videos. But live streams as well, because if I'm down here and I'm working, might as well be live streaming kind of thing. So that would be cool. Okay, I'm gonna hold on to this and ooh, that makes me nervous. Alright. Okay. Think I'm just gonna step up my drill bit size a little bit. A little bit larger, a little bit larger. Until I get it to the size that I need it to be. I don't know why I'm so nervous about this. This is all the bottom side of this barge. I can screw this whole thing up and it's not gonna matter because no one's gonna see anything. Oh, I'm going the wrong direction, that's why. Question is, do I want to keep stepping it up or do I want to pull the barge off and do it separate? Let's do it. Well, step it up a little bit more. Let's try it. How's the barge gonna rock in the water if you screw it down? If I can screw down, it's gonna be sort of set on top of these dowels that are sticking out of the barge. That's a good point. I had considered, do I want to make the water level like higher or lower so I can get like a little bit of an angle coming up to the barge? Might be kind of cool dramatic, but then I realized I was gonna have to use the the float bridge is like a lead track too much. It'd just kind of be a little annoying. So I didn't do that. Instead, try to make it as level as possible. Ooh, yeah, this is not gonna lie. Nope. That's the biggest I can get with a screw. Alright, we're gonna pull this off and finish it off without the barge in place. He put his barge on tilt, so if you don't do it evenly, it rocks to the side. Oh my gosh. I wouldn't even know where to begin on something like that. That's an awesome idea, though. Okay, let's go ahead and this thing digs all the way in. I hope this doesn't turn into one of those don't do what I did streams. Okay. So question is, did I make it wide enough? This dowel is just slightly wider than the hole, isn't it? Yeah, okay, it's wide enough. I'm just gonna have to hammer it in. Okay. Okay. So I'm, I'm gonna have to look that up, Humanity. I want to see how you're able to make your cars rock like that. It's a really cool idea. Alright, so I'm gonna do, this is three-quarter inch. And I want to stick up a half inch. So I need to do my math. Inch and a quarter. Oh, the whole floated locals debate. I'll tell you what, I didn't even know that until I had already started the layout. It's one of those cool things you learn. Okay, so what I'm gonna do is, I'm gonna go into the other room where I do all my wood cutting. Which is not this room because I want to keep this from dust free. I'm gonna cut off two short bits of dowel. I'm gonna bring you with me because you're gonna be on my microphone, but there's not gonna be anything in view on the camera here. So we're gonna still talk to each other. But I'm just gonna be sawing off camera. Sorry for the noise. It's annoying, I know. Halfway done. I promise. And we're done. That was it. See, that wasn't so bad. Okay. So if I do this right, I can pound it in there. You know, some wood glue, it'll hold it in place. Try to clear out that hole a little bit better. Let's give myself a little bit of wiggle room. That dowel's just slightly wider than that screw or the drill bit. Do I have a drill bit bigger than that? Is the question. I think I might. I think I might. No? Yes, is that the wide one? Okay. That is it. Think I'm asking for trouble if I try to cut with this thing? After clearing out the whole hole like that? It's just gonna eat that up. Let's just let's work smarter and not faster. What you do when you don't have the proper tools is you kind of make it up as you go along. Yeah, this one's just about there. This one is not so much. See, I want to get it just so it's I can almost press it in so that I know if I pound it in with a hammer, it will go in just fine. Did I explain why I was using dowels? I'm trying to make a key to like set, so I want to be able to like pull the barge up and off. If I'm going to be going to shows or whatever and traveling with the layout. So I can put all my models like in separate boxes wrapped up and stuff. And so the dowels are gonna be to sort of so when I set it down on top of that, the key into those dowels and the barge goes back into the same spot every time. And everything lines up perfectly. That's the plan anyway. Does that make sense? Makes sense in my head. No, I'm not moving the the float. The float is kind of a permanent fixture. So it's not like I'm going to be like swapping cassettes or anything like that float-wise. That's not the idea there. It is, it is really just about. It is, it is really just about making it portable and functional. So like the highway, the West Side Highway, those are gonna be sort of keyed into place on on brass tubing, right? So I can sort of like place that on to the layout that way and the keys are keys in that way. The 26th Street Freight House will be that way as well. So I can sort of just lift it on and off every time and it goes, it goes right back in the same spot every time. Beautiful. Alright, we'll try pounding those in there. Don't make it too loose or they'll drop out. They're gonna actually be glued into place. So I'm gonna hammer those in with some glue. First, let's get rid of all the models on the layout. So I'm not gonna knock those puppies around. One thing that I've really enjoyed doing, having started this layout, is collecting a whole new line of models. You know, because I need forty foot boxcars and it's not something I ever needed before, but like Tangent makes just an absolutely gorgeous. I don't know if I can show you this and have it being focused, but these cars here. Woo wee, these are nice cars. These Tangent forty foot boxcars are gorgeous. Lupita's got some gorgeous boxcars as well. I've got some wagon top B and O cars from Exact Rail that are amazing looking. Atlas has got some good looking cars too. Need a little bit of work to kind of get them up to the same level as some of the other cars, but they're really nice. I've got a red caboose B and O boxcar that I purchased. That's also very nice. Yeah, I'm starting to, I'm starting to here, I'm not gonna worry about railing these cars. Just gonna sit them over here. Starting to develop a taste for brown forty foot boxcars. Up until like a month ago, they all looked kind of the same to me, but now I'm starting to be like, oh yeah, I like the steel sides on this one. I like the single sheet look on this one. A little, little dated, but they were still around during the, during nineteen fifty-five. You'd see them occasionally. You know, just learning all this stuff about old boxcars. It's cool. It's cool. Something like vehicles, trucks and cars and stuff. It's been very cool to research all that. Okay. Alright, so I'm gonna apply a little glue and apply a little force. First thing I'm gonna do, is tape off the bottom of that hole so the glue doesn't come out the bottom. Where's that other hole? There it is. Okay. Alright. There's the glue. Oh, I need the hammer. Okay. Actually. Number one rule of modeling layout is storage space. That's very true. Just giving a little bit of a taper to the end there, so help me get the dowel started in the hole. Okay. Here is, here goes nothing. Let's this over here. This ratio shouldn't take that much glue. Square over here. Make sure it's kind of vertical-ish. Here we go. Oh, that makes me nervous. Am I going in there straight? Little more. Little bit more. I think it's good. What I'm thinking about, I wipe off the excess glue. Make sure that I am beautiful. Beautiful. I have a cute little speed square. It's a baby speed square. It was much smaller than Amazon led me to believe. If you can imagine that, Amazon, making something look larger than it actually is. But it does the job. Okay. I feel like this one needs a little more work. I've got a cute little, little one. That's what she said. Okay, alright. Here we go. Round two. I feel like the glue was acting as a lubricant. Going slow is the way to make this happen. I think I should do that now. I think I might have just gunned down there. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Guys, I think, I think I did it. Holy cow. It's almost like I know what I'm doing. Let me go a little bit lower on this one. That is wild. I think I did it. Cool. This was a little bit higher, but I can fix that with sanding. Okay, we'll let that glue dry. And then we'll pull the tape off the bottom and those will be set in there perfect. Oh my god. So I've been thinking about this for like two weeks going like, am I gonna really do this? Is this really gonna work? This is really gonna be a thing I attempt? Alright, so now I've got to widen these holes just enough so that they fit in. So let me get my cutting wheel on here. I'm cutting with my little triangle cutting drill. I don't know what it's called. Get a little bit of a larger piece to set this on. So I think this part's just gonna be all about kind of slowly widening that hole until it just fits. You may want to turn your volume down. Use this as a guide too. Not this, this one. What a lovely sound. Okay, so there is a fatal Okay, so there is a fatal flaw. And that is like maybe not getting these holes perfectly round and lined up perfectly. I think if we go slow. I think if we do go slow and just measure often, I think we'll be alright. Only thing needs to be like 100% like perfectly sealed keyed connection. Maybe having a little bit of wiggle room will be helpful when it comes to like, you know, making sure that those tracks can meet up just nice. What are you guys saying about me? You guys make fun of me? So I go from 30 inches to 32 inches, a building size, 19 and a half feet long, 11 and a half feet wide, based on seaboard coastline. Hey, that's cool. I opened up AnyRail and I looked at it and I said, you know what? I didn't feel like trying to learn a new program, so I just grabbed some Walther's templates off of their website and printed those out and just went to town. But AnyRail's great. I mean, if you got like a larger layout. AnyRail's great for that. I've got a good friend who designs a lot of layouts in AnyRail and he's kind of a master at that program. Seems like a really good program. I like the fact that they have like all the major manufacturers turnouts available in the system. So you can make sure that you are. I mean, we've all done it ourselves where you have track plan, you just create a yard ladder and you're trying to fit five, a five-track ladder into two feet, right? And you're like, oh, surprisingly doesn't work. Something like AnyRail keeps you honest. Getting close. This is just about, this is just about done right here. So that one just needs to come out a little bit more. So for those wondering, I'm just, I'm shaving off a little bit. Going back eyeballing it, shaving off a little bit more, eyeballing it, shaving off a little bit more, eyeballing it. Guys, I'm really close. The drumming is almost done, I promise you. That one's perfect. I just gotta widen it just a slight bit more. This one's got a little bit of work left. This one's like basically in there. This one's got a little bit of work left. Okay. I think that hole's done. Okay, now this hole's done, but this hole needs to widen just a little bit. It is almost there, guys. Arches are tight, but that's a good thing. That's what I want. Bingo. Bingo, bingo, bingo. Oh my gosh. Alright, now let's see if I did it right. That lines up. I did it. I freaking did it. Oh my gosh. Oh, that's so nervous. Cause it's one of those things like I can't, it's hard to go back after you've screwed it up. If you make one hole too big or whatever. Alright, hold on. Let me vacuum this up. Okay, so the idea is that I can just take this on and off and it will keep into place like that. This needs to be adjusted just slightly. But this is friggin' perfect. This I know is, or is, needs a little bit of sanding. Cool, 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 cool. Yeah, this needs a little bit of sanding, but that is perfect. Oh my gosh, okay. I'm gonna do one more thing here. And that is I need to run power to this barge. Barge, car float. So I've already marked where my wire's gonna go. So let's go ahead and drill those out. There we go. Holds for our wires. And we are in great great shape. Very happy about that. Cool. Do I want to keep going? Probably not. I'll describe what my next steps will be. How about that? Okay, so I have removed the frogs that are already on the float. That's how I'll be making my own, laying my own track, which is the first time I'm doing that, which is kinda cool. So that'll be the next step. Now that I've got the holes drilled and everything, I can kind of seal it all up. Glue everything down. And then lay the track, run the wiring, and then run the track from the layout onto the float bridge and then connect everything up from there. I've got a custom turnout. I've got a build for this Y here. But yeah. There's no side to side movement on the barge part of it. Cool. Let's see, any more questions? Are you gonna have live shows often? Randy, the idea is that I'm gonna do it as often as I can. I wanna document as much of this build of this, not only this layout, but this layout as well in live stream form. So I always say that I'm gonna do like every session and I don't. So like I'd like to do at least once a week, maybe twice a week, these sort of like one hour-ish live sessions where I tackle a project. So that's the plan. Don't hold me to it, cause you know, inspiration comes and goes and all that. But anyways, okay, cool. Uh, yeah. Thank you everyone for stopping by and cheering me on. I really appreciate it. This was a wasn't sure exactly how this was gonna go, but yeah, I think I can use a little more. I think I can use a little more adjustment on this, but I don't need to do that on camera. But anyways, thank you for coming by and cheering me on. I really appreciate it and yeah, I'm excited to have it to this point. Thank you everyone for being here. I'll see everyone in another livestream.